I'd like to call the order, the City of Sagatuck Workshop for October 4th, 2023. Would the correct click please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Here. Thank you. Uh, any agenda changes for this afternoon? Hearing none. Uh, we'll move to guest speaker. We have no guest speakers. Uh, that takes us to item five, public comment on agenda items only. Uh, anyone in the audience that wishes to address council, um, please, uh, approach the stand and, uh, we would love to hear from you. See none? Anyone on the Zoom call who wishes to offer public comment? See no hands raised, Jamie D. Okay. That will close our first public comment period. Uh, that takes us right to our items for discussion. Number six, uh, six A is the Oval Beach update expenses and revenues. You'll find it on page two of your packet. Uh, over to you, Mr. Peter or Ryan, whomever.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to do a recap of our Oval Beach revenue and expenses, well, which relates to our park expenses. So Peter has put together a graph and he's going to run through it with us.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so at the top of the page, those are, it says 21, 22, 23, those are the seasons. Basically Memorial Day through Labor Day, we sold what 49,000 daily passes. And then the season passes were 1930. And then we sold 375 property owner passes here at the City Hall. So you can compare up from years before, the daily passes were up just shy of 6,000 passes. But the season passes are about the same. You can see that number for those three years. It doesn't fluctuate hardly at all. And the, um, property owner passes, you know, we've been doing this, I think since 2012, it's, it's always between about 390 and 400. So it's down a little bit this year.
Peter, can I, can I pause you?
Yeah.
Cause I know you're going to get into the fiscal year here, uh, but just one thing I, I do want to point out is that the 21 season compared to the 23 season, 21, we're still in the pandemic. People are still finding a way to get outside. 2023, we surpassed the daily passes. It's one of the metrics that, that we can use to see how many people are coming into the city and utilizing our assets. Um, so I would say that the city did very well, uh, this year. And then Peter, so when you say season, I know you're going to get into fiscal year now. Can you just kind of talk about what season means to us?
What season means is basically is Memorial, the summer, see the 100 day season from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then we get to the fiscal year and where are we at? We're right in the middle. July 1st is our fiscal year. So the financial numbers are basically from a year ago season from Memorial Day to June 4th, July 1st. And then the rest of it's July 1st now. So that's why the chart below is all based on fiscal numbers. And it shows you that we had per fiscal year ending 23, we had shy of $550,000. And it's below the year before, then you go back further years, as Ryan had mentioned with the pandemic. You can look in the 20 and 21 fiscal years, they were really high. And we really had, we had the double pandemic here. We also had high water and we're fortunate to have a higher beach than Sal Haven or Grand Haven or anybody else. So if anybody remembers the summer of 20 and 21, I mean, especially 20, when we had the pandemic and nobody knew what to do and everything was shut down. And so we had kind of like a triple pandemic here because we had high water and they were all here. They weren't in Sal Haven or Grand Haven. So that's why those numbers are higher. Then you can see the expenses that right below that 550,000, we've always compared in the past. That the Oval Beach paid for itself, bus paid for all the parks. And in the past, we've always had a, about a cash, I call it a cash cow of about a hundred thousand dollars roughly. That was always left over to go to other city services. Well, the last two years, if you look the next chart down, these are numbers, these are the actual financial numbers in the last four fiscal years. And you can see the payroll, the far right-hand corner, if you look, the payroll cost is really almost doubled in the last couple of years, not double, but up by 50%. Because we went from paying $10 hour health days now $15 an hour summer health. So and then the pay raises with staff, but you know, there's a lot of, you know, I know a few years ago I wanted to increase those, the daily pass or this is something because wages are not going to go down, they're not going to reverse this way. And the supplies, every, you know, we buy everything and anybody, garbage bags, everything is just, it just, it's amazing how quick all of a sudden it went up and utilities are up too. Everybody's electric rates and we have a lot of electricity because it's all well water. It's all power out. There, there's no city water, city sewer. We've got a lot of costs of having the septic pumped out there probably about twice a month for all the traffic. Well, I mean, all the people, more people than the system can handle. So I don't know. Does anybody have any particular questions?
Just a, a comment question, Peter, if I could. So if we were to adjust the 23 year season in the fiscal year, the actual revenue is up to closer to like 600,000?
Yeah, right. If you take, you know, the 49,000 passes that you get $10, you know, that's 490,000. So and then the season passes at 50. So yeah, you're, you're right. Right now, I think for the season, we're about $600,000 gross revenue out, out there through Oval Beach. Either tickets that are sold there daily and the, all the residential passes are sold there. Some of the $50 non-residential or non-property owners are sold there at City Hall. And this, and also this does not include any of the revenues or anything with to do with, um, the concession stand. And that's totally separate. So.
So this goes up until, so fiscal year 22, 23 goes up until July? We're not counting any numbers after July?
First, after June 30th. So yeah, that fiscal 23, we're not counting any of the monies that were accrued after July. That's.
We had a cooler June, like I'm just pointing that out. Um, July was great. August was great. June, not so much.
It was dry. We didn't have a lot of rain. So.
It's a little.
But the other, what was the other? And so I tried to look to see if these, these other 6,000 passes, if they were sold after July 1st. But I think they're evenly across the board because I track by month, year over year. And the sales, the gross sales were up every month, almost evenly, anywhere 10 to 12, 13% every month was up. So it wasn't like it was, everybody was here in July, this increase. It was, it was kind of evenly spread compared to the year, year before.
Okay.
Cool. Just one, one other additional note, when you look at Peter's asterix at the, at the bottom of his chart, talks about park expenses on the expense side. Um, and then I think this chart is very telling. When we say that, you know, the Oval Beach cash flows, the maintenance of our parks throughout our city, um, this is very telling. Mm-hmm. Wonderful report, Peter. I appreciate the information. Um, you know, the, the city has generally been on a track of generating about a hundred thousand dollars in excess funds for the Oval Beach over the time that I've been working with it. That remains pretty consistent. The costs, of course, have increased exponentially. We'll continue to increase with inflationary pressure. So, uh, I think we'll continue to see that go like this as opposed to going like this. And, and I know we're not talking about increasing fees at the beach. That's, uh, for the last time that folks are here about increasing fees for the beach. Let me tell you, that gets some attention. We have from eight to $10 a day. That got a lot of attention. You want to talk about some heat. Um, so, but no pun intended. Um, this is great information. I think the Oval Beach just still represents an opportunity for the city to, you know, as manager just suggested, it's an opportunity to spin money off for other park improvements. And the Oval Beach itself, we had a nice new swing set, which, uh, I think probably got a lot of use this summer. Um, but there's other some things out there that really could use some attention that we, I think council needs to start thinking about past parks and by worst communities, start thinking about, okay, what's some other priorities out at Oval Beach? Cause a hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far these days. So, um, I, you know, this information is great. It's good to see it every year. I appreciate the consistency with the reporting on this. The other question I had was around the, um, and interestingly enough, free Oval Beach passes, one of the questions asked at the forum last night. So I'm not sure who, which citizen put that in there, but that was asked. Um, do we get a count on, maybe you don't know this, do we get a count on people coming in on foot or other modes?
No, no, this is just car. This is just, you know, it basically, it's the privilege to park out there. Cause people, you can drop your kids off, your significant others or whatever. I don't know how many, if they're in urban, the inner urban comes and goes all the time, you know?
And people climbing up.
And we don't keep, we don't keep track of that. Yeah, they don't, yeah. So I, I don't know what the people, or bicycles, you know, that people come in bicycles or people, you'd be amazed, well, how many people walk in from.
Right.
Ball head, absolutely.
Yeah, that's the reason I asked the question. So I think the city should begin thinking about how to better track the usage. Cause I'll bet, I'll bet it's a 30, 30 to 40% bump in that number in terms of the number of people actually going out and using our facilities out there. Not just the daily paid passes and the season passes. So just something else to, you know, put on the table to, to look at. Last question on the financials, Peter. Um, the expenditure is for parks and recreation. That's a shared cost that's coming from, that's coming from other. So in other words, Oval Beach has its own fund, but then we've got Parks and Rec, which would represent other.
Yeah, part, if you look at the bottom of that sheet, the parks, basically that's all the expenses for Wicks Park, Willow Park, Coffin Park, Peterson Reserve and Mountain Ball Head. And then we put some of the costs also of the bathrooms. I kind of split that up between public works, cost center and the parks.
Okay, yeah, that was my question.
The cost of maintaining the bathrooms here downtown Village Square.
Yeah. So that, no, great report. I love seeing this. It's really food for thought and I think opportunities for council to think about ways to, um, continue to improve our assets. Thank you.
Any, uh, further questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, um, the, um, you know, the, so you, we've talked about, of course, we all know the prices of everything's going up. I can't go, go to the grocery store to buy a couple of things for under a hundred dollars anymore. Um, so I understand that, but the supplies, um, have almost doubled, uh, since last year, which is quite substantial. Now those supplies are, that's, that does not include concession stand, right? That's separate. So that's just including like garbage bags and, and things like that.
Yeah, so.
Light bulbs or.
Yeah, supplies, garbage bags, toilet paper, all the cleaning supplies for the bathrooms, all the mulch that goes in the park, the flowers that go in the park. And one, you know, it's all, it was at $40,000. One big thing was the old style heavy duty cement trash cans, those are special order bags. So we had about 8,000. And that's about enough for two, maybe two and a half seasons. Because those bags are like specially made. You just can't, they don't have them on the shelf. So when they run it, they, it's like a minimum order of, I don't know, let's say 5,000. They used to be a buck a bag, but I think now they're about a buck and a half a bag. And you gotta buy like 5,000 of them in a run. So that's, that's why that number is up there somewhat compared to last year. But everything else, just when I start seeing these numbers, you start.
You're, we're not ordering more supplies than usual though. It's about the same.
Ordering more. It's just, I bet you the cost, a lot of that stuff, so anywhere up from 30 to 45%.
Wow. Wow. And then also, um, real quick, um, contractual services. We've stayed around the 12,000 to 13,000 mark the last three years, but we're seeing a jump of about, you know, almost 5,000 this year. Um, did we have more contractual services than before?
Um, I don't know. We, I think we had some, Fleece did some work. I think they did surveys for all the park. That was a few thousand dollars.
Okay.
There, um, because I don't, all the major park maintenance was done in the earlier, the previous fiscal year. So it's just, everything is, it's, then the contractors that we do have, they don't have help. So everything seems to be an emergency when they do show up. So I think that's a reason to maybe charge us a little bit more. So. But let's say everything is going up. So.
Okay. Well, and then another question real quick. The, uh, concession stands, that's a different thing.
That's correct.
You have the numbers on that?
I can get them.
Just out of curiosity.
We, we still ranking money out there. One of the things we were down, we would have, we'd have had more. I think the sales were like within a hundred dollars of the year before, the season before. But what happened is the ice cream, soft serve ice cream machine had broke like 10 days ago and they didn't, couldn't get parts. And so we really, and ice cream is the largest profit margin out there. So we went the last 10 days with really no ice cream. We still had the slushy machine and that was about it, but there were no kind of, and that was a bit, and we couldn't get it fixed, you know?
And, and then, uh, the, the profit that we make at the concession stand, where does that, does that stay with the concessions?
No, it just goes into, it's just always, it just gets to roll into the general fund.
Into the general fund. Okay. I'm just curious, you know, that, you know, maybe, you know, that might be a way that we can help to offset some of the rising costs of the maintenance and everything else that we've seen gone up. And maybe we need to charge an extra dollar for that hot dog or, you know, for the ice cream and things like that. So.
Well, another thing, you know, it's good off, so I'm working on the audit for 23 and I was, they told me they were going to have everything wrapped up by the end of the week. Well, Monday was a good day. I spent a lot of time on the phone, back and forth emails. Now two days I haven't heard from them. So. But I believe we know, we originally told you about $90,000 rollover from the general fund. I think we're going to be well above that. I think we're going to be right at about 150. So.
Wonderful.
They haven't started pushing back at some things that should have went in that fiscal year, not in this fiscal year. So, but I think we're, we're in better state, you know, for the rollover to the general fund.
Very good.
Thank you, Peter.
Two last, yeah, two last questions, Peter. One is, um, on the equipment rental line item, that jumped by about 13,000 from last year. Maybe that's a better question for the superintendent of DPW, but any clue as to what that might have been related to? Is it?
It, probably the major clue is the swing set. You know, we had, we, our DPW guys did everything. They, you know, they spent a lot of time out there in March. And so we had a lot of putting the back holes out there, digging the holes, putting in the footings for the swing set. So that's probably the large thing and a lot, and also it depends on the wind, that sand out there. Every time you've got to go out there with the dump truck or the big snowball truck with a broom on it. So those rates are, are out there. And so then the state raised the rates because those are all based on equipment rental rates from this Department of Transportation.
Yeah. And last question on the capital outlay of 21,000, is that, was that related to the swings?
No, the swings, oh yes, they are at the bottom. This, it was, um, not all of the swings, there was that. And I think we had 7,500 hours, you know, out in the parking lot around the beach where it was washing, we'd get these.
Right.
Southern rains, it would just, then all of a sudden it would start washing out, caving in, breaking out. So Fleece, I, they got like a roll bar. So when it pours rain, it doesn't run right to the beach. It kind of goes to one area that they figured out was the best spot. So I think that was about 8,000, but the swing set was, it was 20, yeah, the swing set, I think we had about, not including labor. We still had about $12,000, which we had gotten a, a nice donation from a local family.
Thank you.
Anything else for Peter O'Ryan on this one? No? All right. Very good. Thank you. Excellent. Excellent report, Peter. Thank you. Um, item B, uh, replacement of playground equipment with, in Village Square. It's on page five. Um, Ryan, you want to kick this off? I know we've got PPW here. We've got DPW here. We've got members of the, that's first here. So go ahead.
So, uh, starts on page five. And, um, for your viewing pleasure, we do have a PowerPoint presentation. Yes, please. It's a time for it. I do have a cover page, but I think everything that I have in my cover page is going to be covered in this PowerPoint presentation. So I think the best thing to do, Mr. Mayor, is to jump right into the presentation. And I think the best person to lead this off is Ms. Baldwin.
Happy to do it. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, so I am very excited and delighted to present to you something that the PPW team has been working on, um, for almost a year now. Um, the sorely needed, um, replacement for the playground equipment at, um, you play at home. Can you hear me now? So yes, I'm delighted to present to you, um, what we've been working on now for, um, uh, a year. Uh, the Parks and Public Work Committee is ready to, um, pull the trigger on getting some new playground equipment. So with that, are the members that are worked tirelessly on it is Glenna DeYoung and Kelly Roach. Unfortunately, they are not able to be here today. They do plan to be here on Monday to answer any questions that you have. Um, not a secret to anyone that the playground equipment that we have now is sorely in disrepair. And we've had an actual inspection performed by ODC. And I think Ryan is going to get into some of this on the, um, concerns that were raised, uh, by our inspection team. That's the next slide. Next.
There, Ms. Baldwin, if I could, just add a few things to the intro slide. Um, it's obvious that the brain trust is wrong. Yeah, we'll just leave it there. You, you don't have to go back to this slide. This is fun. Uh, the, the brain trust is strong in Sagatuck, right? And Douglas and our tri-community area. And I am proud of the, the Parks and Public Works Committee. This is the first project that they're bringing to you for a recommendation. Um, along with their study group, um, which is, is, is strong as well. I mean, Glenna, who's on the call and can barely hear me.
Can hear us, yeah.
Um, has a PhD in physical education and exercise. We also have Kelly Roach, who has a design background. So when it comes to aesthetics and colors, things of that nature, no pun intended. Um, she's got a great background. And then also just some people that helped out, Bertie Holly, right? Probably one of the most energetic people that I know in the area, uh, with, with kiddos. Um, and then Ms. Anna Gregg, who worked with Douglas for their playground equipment. So we tapped into that resource because they've gone through this process already. Um, not to mention DPW, Department of Public Works, working alongside this task force all along. And then just as, as I mentioned, that, you know, this project falls under the theme of maintaining your existing assets. Right? We've heard this a lot. Don't go onto a new project until your existing assets are, are maintained to a level of standard that you want. This project falls squarely within that. Um, and then just a couple of notes on the process itself. This is certainly a bottom up process where you have citizens, uh, stakeholders, uh, gathering ideas from the bottom level. And then bringing it to the Parks and Public Works Committee for their review. And then ultimate recommendation to city council. Um, so it's not a top-down process where you have city administration or an engineer coming in and telling you what to do. This is truly, uh, boots on the ground type effort. And then also all of our meetings with the Parks and Public Works Committee have been open to the public. Um, advertised, pushed out through our news you can use. Um, I think this is nine, nine months in the making.
Also televised and on YouTube.
Yeah. So this is a process that's, that's been going on for, for quite a while. Okay. Next slide, please. Although I just love staring at that slide. And, and, and also to mention, there will be another presentation on Monday if we have a larger audience. Um, with members of the Parks and Public Works Committee present, um, if we do not do this presentation justice. Um, okay, so what is the main driver on this project? It's the fact that we have to replace this playground equipment. Um, and so Scott Herbert and DPW had a concern with the status of the equipment from a safety perspective. And so we engaged, um, Outdoor Discovery Center, who has a certified personnel to come out and do an analysis. Um, and some of the major findings, there were, there were a couple of what we call priority one, safety concerns. The major concern is the timbers that are on this, on this infrastructure. Um, and they, they say that it's at risk of, when it collapses, it's all going to collapse at once and it's not going to be a good deal. So we did this inspection in early spring and we did get through another season. Um, but our staff is, is very adamant that this needs to be replaced. Um, and then there was other issues beyond the timbers with some of the metal, what they call D-rings, some of the, the handles and some other equipment, some pinch points as well. The equipment is, is aged and again, our DPW staff is adamant that it needs to be replaced. And then representing the, this might be a good time, Mr. Mayor, just to have Ellis with the DPW crew just come up and maybe just give a couple of highlights on the safety concerns that you all have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi, uh, my name's Ellis Mack. Uh, so yeah, as, as been stated before, the playground is in dire, uh, need of an update. A lot of the, uh, supporting timbers are, they're not even touching the ground right now. Uh, and I believe it was said that, uh, like the D-rings for the swings, some of those are pretty rusted too. Um, so I think this is probably a good time to get it replaced if ever. Uh, because you don't need kids hurt. So.
Yeah. And then just kind of on the fly here, Ellis, um, I mean, we did go out there and review this with the ODC Outdoor Discovery Center. And we looked at options for salvaging some of this equipment. Can we replace the timbers or could we cut the legs off the timbers and do something else? Basically the response is that, no.
Not really. No. Um, I don't, as you can see in the picture, we've done a little bit. We've reinforced the bases, uh, the best we could, but aside from that, yeah, there's not much we can salvage.
Even a Band-Aid repair was, was estimated at like 50 to $75,000 and that would get you like through a year. We've, we've really looked at every option to get to the point that we are of replacing the equipment.
Can I, can I interject here?
Interrupt our, the presentation at any point.
My child is 23 and I've spent hours at this, hours, I can't even tell you how many hours I've spent at this park. And it was the same configuration 20 years ago. So I'm just wondering how old? How old is it? I don't know how the.
So I think that's a very important point that this has probably served us much longer useful life.
Yeah.
And what I'm hearing is, and I'm looking at, making eye contact with the attorney right now, is that it's dangerous.
I, 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 I have a similar story, Holly. I've got pictures of, of Elsa, who's now a freshman at Western. You know, being, being pushed on the baby swing there, um, you know, when we were tourists here. So, yeah. I think we've all probably got stories of how far back this goes, but also how important it is to not only tourists, but members of the community. It's one of the few places I think where, you know, grandparents, parents, young people can all kind of get together. And I think it's some kind of a tradition. So.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too have a story with my three, three and a half year old Vivian.
Glenna can't hear at all.
I don't know if that's. Um, Craig Baldwin, can you hear us? Just give us a thumbs up if you can hear us. We're, we're, we may have an audio problem.
Yeah, we're wondering if other people can hear besides Glenna.
Passing, passing.
Maybe he can't. Let's see if I can text him.
Right, I'm muted?
Okay. Glenna just can't hear anything. Okay, now she can hear something.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, that's a good one.
We are working.
Technology.
We are actively working on replacing our mics.
Okay, good.
He can only barely hear us.
Okay.
I think people need to put in their earbuds.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I do.
All right, Glenna.
Be yelling into our microphone.
Yes, no.
Oh.
Talk loudly.
Okay, I was going to say, I have experience with my three and a half year old at the playground, some of which has not been great because of the current status of the playground equipment, but she's fine. I hope. We'll hang out in a few years. Um, okay, next slide, please. All right. So some of the priorities for the playground. Uh, and I'm very proud of the, both the study group and the Parks and Public Works, because I think they've have had a lot of thought, I don't think, I know they've had a lot of thoughtfulness and they've been active listeners when it comes to this project. I think they got some pushback with some of their original ideas. They regrouped and they're bringing the project that's, that's in front of you now. Um, so, some of the major points is that it's going to remain at its current location. Um, so then, one of the initial ideas was to move the playground equipment across towards the basketball court where the restroom facilities were to reduce the kids and/or parents that have to use the restroom going back and forth across the street. They got rid of that idea. So it remains at its current location. Also, they want to maximize the, the current or existing foot, footprint and expand about it, expand on it a little bit. Um, however, they're not going to touch any of the existing trees. So there's also tree sensitivity.
Good.
Um, reuse the existing five benches. Um, also keep the public art, which is the fun snake that my daughter loves to jump on and sing into the snake and then, um, get pushed off. And then also the Veterans Memorial stays in place. Um, and then also broadening the range to older children. Right now it's geared to, uh, I don't know, I'd say two to eight-year-olds maybe, but they want to go beyond that a little bit. Also, there's more, uh, fitness, strength and balance, um, that's involved with this project. And then some new modern features, long-lasting materials. That's important. When we started working with Outdoor Discovery Center, looking at the playground equipment, they presented some materials uh, that were very natural, but would not, um, last as long as what the group is presenting. Um, and then just when I mentioned the restrooms and crossing the street, one of their ideas is to add a solar flashing crosswalk sign there, um, to help mitigate, uh, speed on that, on that road. Um, yeah, I think that's it on that slide. And then I'm going to pass it back over to Helen.
So one of the things that's, um, top of mind these days and always should have been is, uh, universal design is what they're calling what we used to call ADA compliant. Um, we're going to be able to keep the initial ramp that's there off of Butler. And, um, in, had a lot of the equipment is actually accessible. and a lot of the equipment is actually accessible to a child who may be in a walking device or a wheelchair. The swings have universal designs as well. There's areas in the towers that you can get to even in the wheelchair and are able to play in the crow's nest and that, and not be left out because you may have some compromises. Unfortunately, it was full compliance for universal design was a little cost prohibitive. We would have liked to do, there's a cord play servicing that you can do, which I'm sure a lot of you have seen at fancier playgrounds. That by itself is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Wow. So we're gonna have bar chips. We're gonna do that. So, but no, there's actual, and so as we start to get into the design, one of the things that I wanted to stress is that we really evolved it to take on a nod to our past Singapore. Even there's a dune buggy in here, so we're bringing in the dunes, and we're bringing in a whole nod to the past. Even the top tower that you see right there is called, it's literally called a crow's nest. We've got a lot in here that really brings us back to our roots and offers an opportunity to explore and to demonstrate a lot of that. If you want to go to the next slide.
Ms. Baldwin, I will just make one note with the full compliance with the cord play service, is that this group, I know that the total cost when we get to that is sticker shock for many, and we'll get to that. But there was an effort to make sure that costs were minimized throughout this process, and this is just one example of that.
Absolutely, yes, that's true. One of those things, and you'll see this next on that, on his point, we wanted to go with a lot of nature themes, and we do have a few, we've got some of these logs and that, like I said, we were going with the old Singapore. Those top ones, when we, if we would have done this the way that would have been just so cool to do, we would have had a lot more of these pieces. They are very expensive, so we scaled it back a little bit, and were able to save over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars by not having all of them made out of the, it's like a composite that's cement, but to do the nature theme. So we're able to incorporate some and have some really beautiful pieces, but yet keep the cost a little more manageable, because it's obviously a, it's a concern. One of the things I didn't mention before, when we have, when we keep with our art and music theme, there's actually some musical, if you look down there at the bottom in the center, those are instruments for children to play, and again, accessible by any child that may not be able to. It's a lot of fun. It's really, I mean, the design, the efforts that Glenna and Kelly put in, I can't stress enough how fabulous it's really gone well. We've been in touch with the History Center, and they're really excited to work with us on even having some, you know, fun signage for the kids to understand. I mean, and a lot of people, even in our community, don't know our history with Singapore. And we've got a canoe in there as a nod to the indigenous history, just a lot that really ties us in and brings it all together. I think it's just a fabulous design. So we went, we wanted to look at four, you know, we went out and got several bids, and we looked, we wound up looking seriously at four different vendors. ODC is somebody that I was really excited to use. I love working with them. We work with them on so many other projects, the city, you know, contracts with them, and I had a lot of hopes for them. Couple of big issues surfaced right away. The structures are made of wood, which is wonderful because it's natural and all that, but we just don't get, we're not going to get a lot of use out of this. We're looking to hopefully get thirty years out of this playground. That's not going to be doable with ODC. Also, they're not even available until 2025, and the playground is in such a state that it really needs to be decommissioned immediately. Adventure World had some interesting pieces in that, and they were much less expensive, but they are noncompliant. They are not, it's like for a light usage, or like, be like beautiful for like a small, maybe, you know, backyard or something, but they're pieces you could literally lift up and carry off if you chose to, and that's not going to work for us. So they were not going to give us the commercial use that we were seeking. So the two, the two that wound up in the race to win were Puntura and Sinclair. We did, we had ODC, Sinclair, Puntura, all did site visits here and looked at what our needs are. Kelly and Glenna visited a dozen playgrounds, areas for different ideas, durability assessments and all of that. And we've gone through back and forth with both Sinclair and Puntura. I think we've had eleven design modifications with Sinclair and four with Puntura. Sinclair is located in Holland. They did the work when Douglas with Beery Field or Beer Park, and also with Schultz. And so we worked extensively with these guys. You'll see as we get further along here that we ultimately decided to go with Sinclair, and I can get into that. So some of these are just some of the views of the equipment that you can see. Lot of rope climbing and a lot of climbing for upper body strength. It also appeals to kids of older age. Our playground right now is more geared toward the younger types, and this one is going to be more accessible for folks. Big airy design was important for us, so not to have an intrusive look. Lot of, and I've got swatches for all of the colors that we're going with. We're keeping it very natural. Lot of greens, browns and that. The dune buggy will be blue, which I think is cool, blue and yellow, just like our dune buggies that we have, you know, on our dune rides here. Thank you, Gregory. This is my Vanna White. Tell them what she's won. So, so anyway, this just gives you like a good view. Some of these pieces may look like they are like, you know, you see them a little bit further out or whatever. You'll see it on one of the last slides, and we don't have to go to it right now. It's all because there has to be a distance around, so anything that's like, looks like it's kind of off by itself, it's because there's a mandatory distance around it that people need to have access for.
Can I ask a question? Does this one right up here, does that spin?
Yep.
Oh, fuck.
I want to climb it, too. I know, I'm excited for it.
Oh, I'm gonna be playing music on the music things, but, and will I be able to fit in a little car?
You'll be able to fit in a little car, yes.
Okay, good.
Are you the standard for the size?
Actually, that's, that's, this is actually a good question, because one of the things is, adults are able to get into any place. Like, if your kid gets stuck in any, there's nothing in there that like a regular-sized adult can't go in there and retrieve a child. Yes, that was an important design decision, too. There's the dune buggy.
Can I ask a question, too? Just like at Oval Beach, say there was a family or a donor that would like to donate maybe that.
Let me say this publicly to the camera, yes, we are open and excited for any donations in our, absolutely. And it hasn't been named. What can you do?
But would that, would there be room here, or would there be the possibility for growth if in the future there was a donation?
I think that we have maximized the space for what we've got. So we've pushed the space out as far as we could with, keeping within city space. But no, I mean, we have a bill, the bill is not cheap. It is, I mean, and you'll hear my thoughts on that. It's really what playgrounds cost, and we'll get to that. But yes, if we have a generous donor out there that's feeling especially generous, please give me a call. I'm right on the website.
There's certainly a place to put a placard or.
Oh, yes, of course.
Or kiosk identifying generous community donors.
One of the things that we'd like to look at, too, is going forward, is some of the, you know, the signs that you have by Retro Boat Rental, where it talks about the history and that, something like that around there would be really wonderful. So we've got ideas, you know, going forward on some of those things, and that would be, absolutely. There's always room for generosity, and this community has shown itself to be exactly that.
Ms. Baldwin, just back to Mr. Muncy's question about the modern merry-go-round.
Yeah.
So Glenna, she educated me on this. This is a new, safe version of the merry-go-round called the spinner, although it doesn't look safer to me. I'm as excited as you are.
And then also, I had another question, too. The material that we see on all the climbing areas and the rope and all that, what is that? That's a very long-lasting fiber material.
Yes, yes. And that's one of the things that I talked to Scott Herbert and DPW. They have been working hand-in-hand with our representative from Sinclair to make sure that they understand what the upkeep is on this. So most of it, nothing but, you know, just keep making sure your nuts and bolts are in line, and yeah, very minimal upkeep.
And that, now, Ms. Baldwin, our DPW staff seems very pleased with all the responses that they received from Sinclair.
Oh, good. And then, you know, we are a big Michigan State fan area, so I'm just hoping no one's going to be offended by.
Hang on, let me put these.
Those colors work for me, Gregory.
Let's see here. So we're getting through some of these. So these are just all different views of the, so you've been through most of those now. And we are down to, we showed you the spinner, we showed you the dune buggy. And so this is the design, I'm sorry, you already had it up, Jamie, if you could put it back where it shows the red. That's what I wanted to show. So the red outlines where you see there, those are required spaces around each piece of equipment. The purple, or I guess it looks blue on here now, is where you can see where you can get wheelchairs in, to the top of the crow's nest and all of that, and that's a really nice new feature that we have, and it just brings us more into, you know, compliance with where we should be. Yeah, some of the touchy-feely stuff, I feel like, you know, going to Sagatuck is typically really expensive. This is very egalitarian, and you know, our playground's always been a place where a family can pack a cooler and bring your sandwiches. You park for free, you can get out, your kids can have a wonderful day, and it doesn't have to cost you a hundred and fifty dollars to get hamburgers somewhere. You know, you can really just enjoy your day. So we've got work to do in that area. But, you know, and we're going to talk about the finances at this point, that's our next slide. But the other thing to keep in mind is that by ballot measure, a million dollars been set aside in our general fund for our parks. That was done several years ago and hasn't been touched. It's time now. People, you know, it's my experience that most people don't mind paying their taxes, but they wonder what they're getting for it. And our playground is in the heart of our city. It's our city center. The equipment is, like we said, horribly in disrepair, and it's time. And, yeah, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars isn't chump change, but it really is what they cost. That's just what they cost now. So I'll let, Ryan was going to take the finance slide as I led into it.
Certainly, thank you. As mentioned before, we talked to three different groups, Outdoor Discovery Center, Sinclair, Puntura. And there was another group that was reached out to. The name escapes me at the moment, but on Monday, I'm sure Glenna.
Adventure World.
Adventure, and I think this is, yeah, a group out of Indiana. And they actually just were noncompliant. They wouldn't be able to meet our standards for construction, so they were dismissed. So comparing these two proposals that are on the slide now, starting with the first line, equipment, pretty much, I mean, not totally on par. Obviously Sinclair is a little less expensive on that. The freight, same. Sinclair is less expensive. And this is where it gets interesting. So one of the fun things about this project, we think, is the idea of a community build. Getting everyone together.
Like they did in Douglas.
They did in Douglas, exactly right. And there are some sensitivities around that. There's a cost savings, but there's a sensitivity from our Department of Public Works and myself of like, okay, it's kind of like summer help sometimes with our volunteers, summer help, summer not. Meaning, we just want to know exactly what Sinclair is going to do. So Scott actually is engaging in those conversations, like, who's moving this heavy equipment? Like, and how much, how much help do you need from us with our heavy equipment? So we're just trying to dial in those details, because details are important.
If I may, I did talk to Scott, I mean, an hour before I got here, he's actually at the hospital with his wife, having their baby now, but still super dedicated and wanting to make sure.
Wants to make sure that everyone knows that he's looked at the support, too. And it's funny, because two years ago, he had something like this put together with Sinclair. And we really went out of our way to say like, well, let's not just go with Sinclair, because they've done Douglas and they're local or whatever. So we had a bias, actually, toward using somebody else, and it really just came down to them being the best vendor for the job. And so if anything, I would say that we went out of our way not to necessarily go with them. There's a reason that they're doing, that they're crushing it in our area, because they're just a great vendor. The, yeah, he has gone back and forth with the rep and been assured, you know, as far as what needs to be done for DPW, and he feels like it's going to be as limited as possible, and he's in a really good place with it, and wanted to make sure that he sends us full support today.
The next line is wood fiber, basically mulch. And then you get into the subtotal there, and you'll see my recommendation on the cover page. And what I'm recommending is that the city council approved the full cost. With that being said, with input, with that being said, there is a very, very strong possibility of getting a grant, working with Sinclair, in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. When I'm talking about the confidence of getting this grant, I'm told it's extremely high. But just kind of based on some experiences recently with having a project and expecting some revenue to come in. I would say if the council just approves this, if you get the grant, that's great, one hundred percent. Again, they're very confident, and then any donations and anything else is wonderful. So then you get the total amount, but that includes the prospect of receiving the grant. So that's the comparison on the last line, three thirty-six compared to four sixty-one.
The grant is from the actual supplier to our vendor, from Game Time, because it makes the equipment. And we have been, again, we are sure as we can be without knowing, and so I don't count my chickens either. The amount needs to, we need to look at it as a four fifty, but we're feeling very confident with the grant, and it's been applied for. We could know as soon as the end of this week. The latest we would find out would be October twenty-seventh.
The day after, or that would be the day that we would have to send the qualified.
So for this, we did what we put in the application, and like I said, they're optimistic, and I just, again, don't count my chickens, but hopefully we can hear by the end of the week. And you see the financing right on there. So we would be able to get this in time, have the playground decommissioned after, you know, November-ish. And DPW would decommission it, and Scott's well aware of exactly what it's going to take as far as how far they get to grind down and all this stuff. And so he's been back and forth with the vendor on that. And we would have this playground equipment installed for our spring season.
You're planning on having this down before winter?
Yes.
Okay, that, I was concerned about that, because of the, because of the problem with it, you know, it lasting one more winter. You know, kids do climb that in the winter.
Yeah, no, they would decommission this at the end of the season.
I'd like to see that gone as soon as possible, knowing the problem.
Knowing what we know, it's just not viable.
I just want to say that I am so impressed with the work that the committee did, obviously, in the city. Obviously, it's taken a lot of time and a lot of consideration. You can see you went back and forth. So thank you. And also, I just want to point out that when I started on council, we did not work closely with DPW, nor did we ever discuss doing these types of updates. So I just want to point that out, that we're working very cooperatively with Ellis and Scott.
And I think a big thing to that is having the Parks and Public Works Committee, I mean, we really work, I mean, and I will say, Kelly and Glenna have just tirelessly worked on this, hand-in-hand with Scott, every step of the way we've been involved with DPW, and made sure that we're not, you know, making any missteps, or is there anything here that we have that we're overlooking? You know, go too far off in one direction and, you know, get them nervous or whatever. So yes. And I think we've, I'm very impressed with it. We've got the right people in the right place now.
I truly think Kelly and Glenna could do about anything.
Yeah. Just turn them loose. Happy to entertain any questions?
I'm just excited about getting this.
Oh, wonderful.
And I had a chance to see Glenna at the forum last night. I don't know if Glenna put the question in, but there's actually a question about this project for candidates. And the question was, what is your opinion of this? And my answer was, I had not had a chance to study this, so I don't have an opinion on this yet. Always supportive of making this. I was around council when the last playground, if you remember, was put in. I tell you, if you saw what we had before, holy cow, you'd think this was like.
Disneyland?
Yeah, so, but there's a lot of questions around this that I have as a council member, and I know the community rule as well. But I want to thank Glenna and Kelly. Glenna was very supportive of this last night. She is pushing my arm pretty hard about it. I appreciate that. Seeing some of the same information today is very helpful. I will say that there's no question this is needed, but I'm feeling a little bit of a, I need a moment to kind of think this through. There's a number of questions around financing, the priorities, the budget. You know, I'm not necessarily scared of an investment of close to a half a million dollars. However, that needs to be done thoughtfully with other priorities and other projects that the Parks and Public Works is probably bringing to us. And this will have an impact, I'm assuming. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Based on the calendar and the information I'm seeing here, it looks like council has an opportunity to have, an opportunity to ask more questions, and have some conversation around this. Make this at the last meeting, and October the twenty-third, February the twenty-seventh, see if you can do it after the date. That's what I would look for, and I think there's an opportunity to engage the public. And I'd be curious to hear what the public may have had to say about this presentation. It's the first I've seen it, and I'm excited about it. And I'm excited by it. I'm excited by some of the incorporation of our history and so forth. And I'm excited by this, but I have.
So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And again, this has been out in the public. I, all of our meetings are public. There's, there's nothing that we don't do that's.
Has it been published in the commercial record for folks to even see the concept? Just so folks start to see it?
So no, but here's the thing, we, as a council, approved the Parks Committee and we have worked with them. This is not something that's been just done on a whim. This is something that's been well researched with the right people and that content is very good. And that council put those people in place. So we have a Parks and Public Works Committee to do this. And that's how the bottom up goes, right? So it's been looked into in what we can get.
Again, for the most bang for your buck, we could, you know, chisel around the edges and knock off the spinner for $25,000 or whatever, but I don't think that that's a good way to do it. And you, you have a committee in place for a reason. My view is that you have a committee in place for a reason. We do have a budget. We have a million dollars that's been set aside. If we spend a third of that getting our, our playground up to date, then I think it's money well spent, but that's what that money is there for. And I think it's really time to make this move forward. That's my view.
I understand. My question is not around the financing. My question is around just the project itself. And there's a number of other projects, Mount Bald Head, Overbeat, Park Street, which is going to be a huge example for the city. This comes at the expense of that, in my opinion. A million dollars is not a budget item. It's just money that's been set aside. And once we use that money, there's no sent, there's no guarantee it's going to be replaced. So we had to be very careful. That's where I'm coming from. So it's not a criticism of anybody. It's just more thoughtful. And we have a little bit of time to kind of think through some of those questions as well as I think it's some, because I've already had several emails. And the question was asked at the forum last night. So people are beginning to look at this now that it's been put out there in the packet. So that, that's what I'm starting to hear.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the main driver on the timing of this is that we know that we have to take down the playground equipment. And then there's a lead time for ordering this material. And now there's a group that's been working on this diligently. And we know that people have been paying attention to the Parks and Public Works Committee meetings because when they talked about the splash pad. Right. So it's, it's been out there. And I guess what we have to do is educate folks that you have established a committee. They do have open public meetings. And that is a great forum to show up and have your input because there's dialogue there at every meeting. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we push out the news you can use. So all of those meetings are advertised. Nothing in the commercial record. We don't do that for every committee and commission that we have. But the main driver is, do you want equipment there in the spring? And if yes, then maybe you ought to listen to your committee that's been working on this, that you appointed. And, and/or not. I mean, that's, that's an option for you. But we do know we need to decommission that equipment. So I hope, I think just from a staff standpoint, we, we hope that we're ready for, for the spring, summer season.
And, and thank you. Let me clarify, I am listening to the committee. That's not what I'm saying. I have, just as a responsibility as an elected official, to ask some questions and I've got questions and that's it. It's not a criticism. As a matter of fact, I, I'm excited by this. There's some cool incorporations of history, as I said here, which are super cool. And I'm supportive of the concept. Just have some questions that need to be addressed. And, and we don't have enough time for me to go through all of them today. But I would like the opportunity to, you know, continue to ask those and, and how appropriate to get those out there and, and should be able to be answered pretty quickly, it sounds like. So.
Helen, as Chair of the PPW Committee, when would you like this up for a vote?
Monday.
Okay.
I fully support.
I'd also like to say, don't get rid of the spinner. I have to say that, you know, knowing Scott and Scott has worked in this community for a long, long time. I remember when he was a kid working for Bruce, when I first moved to the community. And, and, and knowing this equipment and seeing the same company and the equipment that's been used at Berry Field. And, and you know, their plans for Schultz Park. You know, it seems like good stuff. And there was a great rapport. You hear it from the families and the kids when they redid the park over at Berry Field. I'm very confident in, in, in this plan. And, and I'm glad that you took the time to do this because when I saw it on my packet, I, I might have, Russ, to your credit, I was like, well, whoa, whoa, I hadn't heard about this and this and that. But from your presentation, I have to say, I'm impressed from everybody there at the PPW and the work Glenna and everybody put into doing this. I'm very impressed with your presentation. And, and I'm, I'm excited. I'm looking forward to, to spinning on the spinner.
My, my, my one, my one bit of feedback for, for Helen would be, and Ryan, is I would very much like the public participation comp, component included. I think if, if people in this community show up, and I know they will, to, to work on this project, it will build ownership, it will build pride. And it will be just a great, and in addition to saving money. I think it will be a great, great way to bring the community together.
It's funny because I think that we only need 30 people. I'm like, oh my gosh, we could get that walking to the park.
I, I predict you will be fighting people off. You know, you'll probably have too many. And apologies to Scott Herbert right now, who's got bigger priorities that he'll have to manage a lot of.
Yeah.
Help.
Eager, yes.
But I, I do think it's very much worth doing. So.
I just think when, you know, when the community talks about a budget and money that's set aside for parks, you know, that was made a priority because of the, the dangers that are there that, with the current playground equipment that exists. And we knew we had to decommission it. We can't just go without a playground there, you know. So, and I understand why that was our priority. And I understand, you know, the top of Mount Bald Head, that's looking a little rough up there. But I was hoping that maybe with the AT&amp;T project, we could get some of those costs taken care of there. And I'm sure that's, you know, part of the thinking on some of the upper deck stuff at the top of Mount Bald Head.
I don't think that this needs to come in at the expense of anything else that really needs to be taken care of, not in my view. And yeah, it's just the other thing is, you know, we're talking about how much expense, how expensive things are already. And five years ago, the five-year plan had talked about the, the need for a new playground equipment. So this is already, I mean, this is ancient times, right? So in playground and government years, maybe not so much. But so they, and they had talked about it then. Back then, they, they budgeted, I want to say, or just budget, not budgeted is a strong word, but they projected that it was going to cost probably $175,000. Five years ago before COVID, that would have bought you this playground. Those days aren't here anymore. This really is, I, and again, I have sticker shock. It's, it's just what it costs and it's, it's in line with what they spent at Berry. It's in line, it's, it's in line with all of that. It really is just what it costs.
I would just like to add too, in my mind, this is an economic development issue because this is a feature that brings people to town. You know, people plan their day, they bring their grandkids, you know, it's, it's inconceivable to me as a town that's 100% tourist-based economy that we would not have a park. South Haven has multiple parks. South Haven has some cool parks. Holland has great parks. You know, I don't think we could even go one season without that park downtown. I mean, so.
That is what we were trying to avoid as well. Yeah. Not, not having to push it out to 2025.
It's part of the day. It's part of, you know, people deciding whether they're going to stay at the, at an inn or an Airbnb when they, when they have multifamilies or they're coming in for the day. It, it's part of, it, it's part, it's an attraction. That's, and, and it needs to be safe. It needs to be well designed. It needs to be thought out. It needs to be on brand because it's part of the town. It's part of our city. I would agree with that 100%.
Any other final words on this? I'm, I'm hearing none. This will be on the agenda Monday for a vote. Thank you so much, team. Once again, this shows, I think, the wisdom of this body creating a Parks and Public Works Committee. This level of detail, this level of expertise, Glenna and company, that those of you that are on, all of you around the table that work this, thank you. This shows the deep expertise and deep bench we have in the city for getting stuff done. And, and thanks to the DPW team for also working on it. So with that, I apologize. I've been on my phone. I am trying to get my youngest on the inner urban.
Do your thing. Do you want me to?
For a second. Well, no, no, I can stay. I just apologize for.
Yeah. It's okay.
Thank you very.
Thank you.
So let's move on to item 6C, early voting agreement with the city and township. Jamie, are you going to take us through this one or is?
CP, thank you.
Jamie, do you, do you want to walk us through this item or Ryan?
I can.
We can.
You want to tag team it? And I'm sorry, I just want to make sure she's got.
Okay, so with Prop 2, last November was passed with a bunch of changes to elections. And one of it was nine days of early voting for all state and federal elections. So with that, there's three options for early voting. One is for the county to provide that for all of the jurisdictions in their county. Or if they decline to do so, as Elegant County decided not to, to do it. So it defaults to each municipality to either provide that on their own or to enter into an agreement with another municipality and do it together to cut costs. And along with that, there is a state grant of $30 million for this. And we already submitted our plan to our county. They submitted the grant. But our understanding is if you join with another municipality, there's higher odds that you'll get more money out of the grant than if you go alone. If I go alone, it's probably going to be about 30 grand. The nine days of early voting has to be set up as a precinct. So like election day, for nine days, eight to four, all our workers, costs about seven grand a day right now for me to run an election. So for nine days, I'd have to occupy the space or rent a space. And so it just makes sense. Right now, it's Sagatuck Township and us decided to do it. Over there, they have the, the space. And so what I'm asking right now is for you to agree and support me on this.
Absolutely.
And to add to that, so we've been working with legal counsel on drafting the agreement. And we do have one in the packet for you. I know there's been, I think, three small modifications as of later, as, as of today.
Yeah, yeah, just a few that we're still working on. And they're really minor, minor. So on Monday, the agreement's going to look just a tiny bit different than this, but we're just still trying to work it out with the township. My deadline to get it to the county, the county knows that we are in agreement. I have a deadline on October 30th to get this to the county so that they can meet their deadline with the state.
Thanks, Jamie.
And I'm sorry, we, we will provide a budget for nine days of early voting. Rebecca, the township and I will work on that and present that to you prior to that in the future.
Okay, great. Questions for Jamie?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we going to be paraded on the expense since they've got like four times the amount of voters?
Well, so we talked about that. We'll, we'll split it between the days. There's nine days. It's hard to say how many people are going to show up, right? We have 840 voters. They have 3,000. What they did say is you kind of estimate, they're estimating 30% of your last voter turnout for your election. So maybe 80 to 90 people from us. And maybe, you don't know how many people are going to show up. So we're going to go into it splitting. They're going to, they're going to do five days, four days, sort of right now. This is the first year. The state also suggested that it was a two-year agreement. We just want to run it to the end of the year so we get a feel for how it's going to go. We've also talked to Douglas that she possibly may want to do it. So we, we're just trial and error. And that's kind of how we're going to approach it to see how voter turnout is.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Go ahead. Any other questions for Jamie? Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, just, sort of thanks. Great job, Jamie.
Thank you.
Just kind of curious how this all got started. I mean, I know how it got started through the Prop 2, but, but what kind of got you thinking about an opportunity to partner with township and potentially the village?
Well, because they gave us the three options. And so if I, if I can, if we can get grant money for a new tabulator or materials and to help costs with election workers, I'm all for that. And if that means partnering with somebody else, then I'll do so if, you know, I, I don't, I don't see it, I don't see the benefit of us doing it. I'm, I, I have, they have a lot of election workers compared to ours. I have, I have great election workers. I have enough for a day of voting. But when you start asking them to work nine days straight and the costs and, you know, it just makes sense when we don't know how the voter turnout is going to be for nine days. So we'll have a better idea after the first time to plan in the future what that looks like. And I have the availability, availability to do it on my own in the future if need be.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to add to Jamie's comments, Jamie goes to clerks' meetings with all the Elegant County clerks. And so they talk about this type of stuff. So they've been talking about this for.
Meetings and meetings and meetings.
It's all, it's all very new to them.
Yes, county provided. No, there are other counties that are providing it for their counties, but Elegant County decided not to. And so, you know, anything can change in the future, but going into the first one, I feel more comfortable partnering with another municipality.
Go ahead, Garn.
Well, I think the, the good thing about doing it this year is getting it done for the first time because next year's a big year. And that helps all the clerks, especially Jamie, but all the clerks really kind of understand how this is going to work, what the turnout is going to be because next year will be really big.
Yeah. Jamie, thank you for taking the initiative on this. This is really good. Anything else for Jamie?
The, the last comment I would add is I remember a couple of months ago, conversation after, after a council meeting and Jamie talking about the early voting. And I could see the concern on your face about poll workers and having to staff and so forth. And so this is a so it's got to be a relief for you and a little bit of anxiety.
Little bit of Prop 2. There's a lot more Prop 2 I'm dealing with too.
Great idea.
Yeah, I would, I would say it's just another example of try community cooperation. So that's, that's a big change in the last four years.
Yeah, and we, we really, us clerks really work well together. So it's good to have them.
Anything we can do together and leverage expenses and that is always, I think, just a great idea.
All right, we'll be, we'll be, this will be up for a vote on Monday then. Very good. That takes us to 6D, special event application, Halloween festival, page 27.
The date is the 28th.
Yeah, Jamie noted that. It's, it's correct on the application.
And it's not a tree lighting room.
Haven't seen the Halloween tree.
Been a problem with that date, didn't we? Everybody did. Josie, I did, you did. Same thing. It's the same event they did last year. There's not going to be a parade. And I'll be helping out for that event this year. So there's going to be a costume contest. They're going to have a scavenger hunt that'll start here in Sagatuck and end in Douglas. So there are Douglas merchants that are involved as well. So it brings in both cities with the event. And then of course, trick or treating. So they're taking donations for candy to give to shopkeepers so that shopkeepers can have candy on hand. So it's, it's a simple event, but something the kids look forward to every year here in town. They're used to having the big parade. But due to safety concerns and the hopes that we want to save all our, our safety money for Christmas parade. So, so yeah.
All right. Gregory, I have a question. The Sadaba, back to, so donations for the candy and that, and I donated for the, the decorations and they look beautiful. Is Sadaba not soliciting money from the businesses anymore? Or is that a whole other meeting?
That would be a whole nother meeting. And, and I've offered to help. Of course, you know, I haven't been a part of the organization for about two years. However, I've offered to help as a volunteer. They're struggling as an organization, but I know that they're, they're, they're talking about, you know, reorganizing and coming back together. They did not collect, they're still, they're still a nonprofit organization. They are, they're still insured. But they did not do a membership drive this year. Neither did they collect money for the drugstore wall ads, which I thought was funny because that was always good money coming in for Sadaba. So there has been just a little bit non-action, including they no longer have a website. So which, which Julie Abel and I built a couple of years ago, and I was very proud of that. And now that's gone. So I think that they're, they're going to talk and regroup and, and there's, there's, there's concern with having maybe possibly, if not later this year, early next year, a meeting with business owners to see if business owners would like to see Sadaba continue, what they would like to see out of Sadaba and what they would like to contribute to keep it going. So.
Thank you.
If I could ask a question, the timing, the Rotary is hosting the first ever Zombie Bike Ride on the 28th. And it starts at 11.
Right.
And afterwards is chili and such. So I, in an effort to try to collaborate a little better, I would like to humbly suggest perhaps moving this later by an hour so that gives folks time to finish their bike ride, have their chili, and then get over here. Because trying to do an event that tops right on top, 12 is going to make it really tight.
From one to three, right? I can, I can ask, you know, bring that up to Josie.
That way we can do both.
Yeah.
And that's good.
But that, but your event is a new event where this is a traditional event. So.
It's already been out there and advertised for weeks. So I don't know what to tell you. So.
What is the zombie? Could you, could you tell me a little bit about what the Zombie Bike Race is?
Exactly. It's not a race. It's just a bike ride. It's for fun. Yeah. If you want to go on to Key West, I, I've got the link to Key West. Traverse City does a huge Zombie Bike Ride every year. It's fun. It's a family event. Everybody's encouraged to dress up. You literally are. You literally are giving out awards for best dressed, most zombie-like, you name it. Um, it's very family focused and that's part of the reason we, uh, Rotary decided to do it was to try to have more activity involvement in that. So it's been posted for weeks now. April Gundy is spearheading that for us. Um, and it's being, and Douglas has already supported it. So this is where I want us to be really careful that we don't overlap each other.
So you really want to support each other?
Absolutely.
You're pulling from the same group of people.
Right. Yes, probably. Absolutely.
So would it work to do one to three then?
One to three would.
Your suggestion would be one to three. So, okay, I'll reach out.
Yeah, if, if you two could socialize it with your various constituencies and if, come back with an agreement.
I like the idea of incorporating both of the events. That way the same group of people can do both.
Town longer spending, spending more time.
We'd love to be able to encourage folks, hey, when you're done here with chili, head on over down to the park.
Sure.
You know?
If, if you guys can sort that and get it back to the manager before Monday, I think that'd be ideal. If you guys can kind of get that sorted. It's, it's an hour. I mean, so let's.
She should be here, um, at this meeting because we've got three of her events. So, um, I will update her.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the Halloween festival? All right. Six P special event application, tree lighting ceremony. It's on page 32. Anything on this one, folks?
Just that we have it now so I can let the elves know.
That's the same as usual and we'll expect you, Mr. Mayor, to help with the tree lighting as well.
And that is the Friday after Thanksgiving, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right.
And we'll also expect a donation of a tree from our treasurer.
He's left. Can you see that conveniently?
I noticed that. How convenient.
We'll work on those elves for the stars, Russ mentioned. So get that sorted as well.
Yeah, it's the same thing as last year that you were at.
All right, good.
That's the day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, right.
Yep, right. Anything else on that one? Uh, next is the, uh, annual holiday parade, page 37. Once again, I think this is familiar to most folks. Uh, any thing, go ahead, Jamie.
So there's not an event map because the organizer wants to work with the safety committee or the safety to, um, put that map together. There's, there's, that's why there's that one in here.
Right. Okay, yeah. Anything else? Groovy. All right. Uh, that covers our six discussion items for this afternoon. Uh, seven, we're at public comment period. Anyone in the audience wishes to offer public comment? I don't see any takers. Uh, oh, we do have a member of the Zoom call that wishes to offer public comment. Uh, I see Vicky's iPhone. Uh, Vicky, if you're unmuted, uh, please, you're welcome to make public comment.
She's got unmute herself.
Yeah, Vicky, you need to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, Vicky Cobb, uh, Sagetuck, City of Sagetuck. Just a, an observation. Councilman Gardner always has a lot of questions about projects that are going on in the city and that's always a, a useful thing. He asks many questions at every meeting, usually mentioning that he's got a lot of emails from constituents asking these questions. My, my observation and I guess my recommendation is perhaps he could do what the public is asked to do and attend some of the public meetings where these questions could be answered and he'd have the answers for his constituents as they are asked. Thank you. That's it.
Is there any other, uh, public comment? I don't see any hands raised. Jamie, do you see any hands raised? All right then, let's close the public comment. Uh, we have no correspondence. That takes us to council comments, item nine. Garnet, would you like to start?
Yep, all good. All set. Thanks.
All right, Russ.
Uh, no comments. Thanks.
Anything, Lauren?
I don't have anything.
Great. Holly?
Nothing. Thank you.
Uh, Gregory?
Nothing, believe it or not.
Helen, anything?
I just want to thank everybody for engaging on the presentation. Um, it's been a lot of work in a, in a long way that, to, to get us here. And I'm encouraged by it and I look forward to the vote on Monday. Thank you.
My, my only comment, and she's unfortunately left, is I wanted to thank Lisa Mize. Uh, CVB, uh, is doing some, um, interviewing of the tri-community area for their next, their board meeting, which I believe is coming up, uh, tomorrow. Uh, she was kind enough, in addition to, you know, talking to our peers in Douglas and our peers in the township. Uh, she invited me, the mayor pro tem, the former mayor and our city manager, uh, to meet with her this afternoon and her consult, or not with her, but with her consultant, uh, to lay out kind of Sagetuck's perspective on, um, on community events and things that the CVB is interested in. So, uh, I think it was wise for her to actually be able to engage with city officials in addition to two business owners in Douglas and the, um, and Sagetuck. So, uh, with that, I just wanted to thank the CVB for listening to Sagetuck's perspective on this. And, uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Question, Louis second. Muncie, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.